Here, obviously, Parker.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
President.
The Quorum is present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby Alderman Robinson, I spoke with earlier this afternoon and she is with her mother who's ailing and I offer, ask us to, or asked me to offer her apologies for not being here, but obviously, I think we all understand that that reason is certainly one that we acknowledge and also I've shared with her, which I'm also sure that we would want to do, our best wishes for her mother's recovery as quickly as possible. With that, let me ask that we, I guess that we look toward two, who Alderman Thomas is going to offer the prayer and the pledge and ask that we stand for that beginning of our meeting.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow in thy presence, we want to thank thee for all the many blessings of life. We're thankful for the opportunity to meet and do a portion of the city's business. We're thankful for each one that are here this evening and we'd ask that the things we do be in accordance with thy will. Want to pray for our military personnel, pray for our leaders that make a decision that affects us all, pray for the families of those who patiently wait for the return of their loved ones. We'd ask that when we fail thee, that you forgive us, for it's in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved. Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved or submitted. On the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
We only have two communications. I'll go ahead and take the blank of motion.
We'll be accept and file, all of them, both one through two.
One through two.
One through seven? Oh goodness, we got some more then, didn't we?
One through two.
Here.
Two.
We got one and two.
Yes, throw those away.
Didn't make.
Never mind.
Huh? I only got two.
There's only two.
Oh, okay. It'd be hard to accept and file one through seven then, so I heard one through two. One and two.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone want any one of those pulled on the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Let's see, we've got, and happy to see her here, we've enjoyed a partnership of maybe four years now, three for sure, with the Arkansas Art Center. It's a very productive partnership and we're extremely pleased to be a part of that center. The center reaches out much beyond the geographic boundaries of Little Rock and I would dare say that we're probably the community that takes more advantage in terms of the classes and obviously the exhibits and many things that are there. I long tell people that anything east of the Capitol in Little Rock is closer to 100% of our neighborhoods than 50% of the capital city's neighborhood, so we're proud to ask Nan Plummer to come to the microphone and share with us whatever she'd like.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to read this.
Moment, simply to thank you, to say thank you for your support as our seasoned partner, specifically with the museum school and its programs, but the art center as a whole and everything that, anything that helps one part helps the whole. For example, the museum school gallery, where the city is credited for its support in part, is one of the first things that about half of our visitors see when they come into the building and there are small exhibitions there all year long of the work, not of great artists, but maybe great artists in the making, artists who come from north Little Rock and Little Rock and Benton and even Conway, people who walk through our doors and discover the arts there. We've had a wonderful year with your help, all-time record enrollment in the museum school, lots of innovative programs, and there are wonderful exhibitions coming up this year that I hope all of you personally and everyone on this side of the river can enjoy. A beautiful Jim Hansen show in the fall. If you like Muppets, you'll love this exhibition. If you like drawings and performing arts for children, there's something there for you too. And a beautiful glass exhibition at the end of the season. So we hope to see lots and lots of people from all over our community and I think the city has been a supporter of the art center since I've been here, Mr. Mayor, and that's going on five years now. And since I have been here, the gathering of our cities around the river, using it more like our piazza rather than something that divides us, has been something wonderful to see. And the leadership has definitely come from you and from this body and that has benefited us all and has certainly benefited us at the art center. So I wanted to say thank you and thanks for having me.
Well, you're very welcome and I think many, if not all, of us realize that, you know, that the heart of a community is indeed its exhibit of the arts, whether it be theater or painting or the different dances exhibitions, and we're proud to say that, as reflected by the art center, our heart is certainly beating well and under your leadership, we very much appreciate what you do and continue to do in sharing that part of what we consider the, one of the most beautiful aspects of our community.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, Nan. We also have a public hearing that is going to continue on our noise control ordinance. Let me just indicate, you know, the principal sponsor, I know there's several sponsors of that, the principal sponsor, Ms. Robinson, Alderwoman Robinson, had during my visit this afternoon indicated, obviously, to support the continuation of the public hearing, ask that her legislation be read but not voted on and assuming that there is a reading due, be read and not voted on and that we will indicate to those here as well as the, those that may not be here, that this public hearing will be continued until at least the next council meeting before any likely vote would be taken and that any time during the progress of this, that there will be an opportunity for the public to speak prior to any vote. I understand, Mr. Carter, that Ms. Robinson discussed a couple amendments with you and before we convene the public hearing, I know we haven't attached those amendments, but you might want to just give a brief explanation in case anybody in the public might want to be aware of what those are as well as the council. I'll tell you what, why don't you go ahead and explain the amendments?
There's some amendments I've worked with Alderman Robinson on as well as Alderwoman Ross today. We made some good progress on working towards some amendments. Part of it is to standardize some of the distances from which measurements are taken when outside. I know the previous version of the ordinance had some measurements at 20 feet, some at 25, some at 30 feet, I think even some at 35, and it's to standardize all those measurements at 30 feet. Also, I think after the outside decibel readings were done, it was apparent to some of our city leaders at least, that the decibel limits that we had placed inside the ordinance were too restrictive and that they would be raised. And that's both in the residential and commercial limits and with the level of transient sound difference for equipment usage such as lawnmowers and things like that.
Are those ready for action, those amendments?
I'm not sure. The amendment that is prepared was done with Alderwoman Ross today and I'm not sure if she wants to go forward with that in the absence of Alderwoman Robinson or not.
I think with Alderman Robinson gone, we'll wait and hold it for her.
Okay, because when we discussed it this afternoon, unless there is, you know, some consequential debate on the amendments, you know, the thought that I had and she said that, you know, in concert with her co-sponsors, if they were agreeable, you know, that we might, if there was somewhat of a consensus, that we might move forward on those so that they would then be before the community and as such, they would essentially have a better feel on what to comment on.
Well, Mayor, I've got amended ordinances ready for distribution, if that would be the will of the council, I'll hand these out and they all have underlying sections as to what's been added and striped through as to what's been deleted and I can run over those in pretty quick fashion to let you know exactly where we're at and what changes were made and why.
Well, I know that obviously Alderwoman Robinson could withdraw this if she were here tonight and reintroduce it, so, you know, in light of the fact that we're not going to be voting on this tonight, I might encourage the council for the purpose of information to the community so that they'd have the opportunity to comment on what the legislation is that we consider, you know, without obviously, again, indicating anybody's ultimate desire about the passage of the legislation, to see if we could go ahead and amend this in and that way it would be before the community so that they could comment on it, Alderwoman Ross.
The only thing, these were my amendments, these were not Alderman Robinson's amendments.
Oh, okay. Your amendments.
And I spoke with her briefly, but, you know, she's with her mother and everything, so I didn't really have a time to go over everything with her, so.
It's really up to the council. I was just suggesting that we try to incorporate as many of these amendments as we could so that folks would have the opportunity to look at it. I know, I think she indicated that there may be other amendments, but if they're somewhat non-controversial in terms of the ultimate, what's your will?
It's up to you. It's up to me. And we can go ahead. I think that she'll be fine with these.
All right.
And I mean, we can always go back and change it too if she's, you know.
Yeah, let me do this then. Without objection, let me go ahead and ask Ms. Whitby, for purposes of amendment only, to call Alderwoman Robinson's legislation.
This is the ordinance amending North Little Rock Municipal Code to include a chapter on noise control, second reading.
All right, they're being distributed now and then I'll just ask the city attorney to go ahead and/or Alderwoman Ross to, you know, tell us what these amendments are. Now, is these just Alderwoman Ross's amendments or are these all amendments?
This is a total amended form.
Okay, so these are a combination of everybody's amendments.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I ask that we have a couple of weeks to study this.
Well, we're not going to be voting on it, obviously. We're just gonna, you know, all I'm suggesting is that we incorporate it because essentially this could be done, you know, by Alderwoman Robinson and/or her two sponsors withdrawing this and resubmitting it. The reason I'm suggesting we do it this way, without intending that we're going to take an ultimate vote on it, is that way we'll just have before the community what, you know, Alderwoman Ross as well as her co-sponsors are intending for us to ultimately vote on.
And we can always come back and then change these also.
That's correct. All I'm suggesting we do is we amend it now so that we'll have before us what's the latest of what we think the sponsors are intending to ultimately present to us for a vote. All right.
Mayor, on the first page, you'll see we've inserted a new section 43.1 with a policy statement that states an overall policy that we understand that sound gets made in society and that the purpose of this ordinance is to have harmony between those who create sound and those who are affected by it. On the second page, you'll see the insertion of a definition for the words plainly audible. Plainly audible was used a few times within the ordinance and we, instead of defining it multiple times, we wanted to find it in one place, so just move that definition to the beginning. Moving to page four, you'll see that there is the insertion of a new section regarding construction or repair and it allows for construction within commercial, or within residential zones to not be bound by the same residential rules for generating sound. And we understand construction is noisy and that's part of it and that the limits, time limits are a little different in there. On the fifth page, you'll see that there are two places which the distance of 20 feet has been stricken and replaced by a distance of 30 feet for measuring. You'll see in subsection B at the bottom of page five, some exemptions to the application of this ordinance, one being New Year's Eve and the other being professional amateur school-related athletic or sporting events. Whenever the home team was winning, we thought it wouldn't be applicable to tell the fans not to cheer.
Well, we might ought to keep the opposing team, they can't cheer, but, you know.
I'll see if we can shape an ordinance for that. I'm not real confident that we can, but maybe we can do that one. It's, also on the top of page six, you'll see that the distance has been changed from 20 to 30 feet and you'll see where we've also moved that subsection one and two about applicability to athletic events and the definition of plainly audible, where that was moved to the beginning. In section 43.5, that's when I guess we start saying the rubber meets the road as far as the table goes with decibel limits. And based on reading the meter, I guess whenever we did some experimentation outside, it seemed to be the will of the sponsors to raise these limits some, so you'll see that the decibel limits have been raised for both residential and commercial zones and then it was kind of a feeling that industrial zones are just kind of noisy areas and a lot of industrial zones, they run 24-hour operations, so that at this juncture, we thought it was advisable to remove industrial zones from the limited area. At the top of page seven, you'll see that it's clarified that measurements are made, sound measurements are made at the source of the complaint. If the measure, if we're checking outside, then it's within 30 feet of the bounds, we always make sure we have that 30-foot measurement in there. If it's taken inside, then it's any point inside of a structure. There's also some, the rules for transient source sounds have changed in subsection D. Normally, we did say that transient sounds were authorized 20 decibels higher than what was in the table. We looked at that and we said, well, that's really not enough for a lawnmower, you know, and especially for some of the larger pieces of equipment that people normally use around their house, we thought it'd be better to have that limit higher. So we said it, moved that from 20 to 30, but then put the caveat that that's acceptable during daytime hours, that's not acceptable during normal sleeping hours, that you shouldn't be cutting your grass at night, making those kind of noises, unless, we did put an exception in there for emergencies, because it's foreseeable that you have a power failure, something along those lines, somebody'd have to use a generator at night if we had a power failure. So that one exception is placed in there. The amendment in the construction area, in the construction part of this section just refers back to where construction is defined earlier with our added section. In the motor vehicle and motorcycle sound limit, we completely struck the stationary run-up column. You can see all of those sound levels, that entire column's been stricken with the speed limit 35 miles per hour or less being raised to 88 decibels, which was the stationary run-up level, and then the motorcycle level being raised to the same decibel level as large vehicles.
So I can run up my Harley without fear?
I wouldn't say it was without fear. I think if it's, if it's, if it's stock equipment with a muffler, I think you'd be fine, Mayor. If modifications or glass packs might not be acceptable.
Well, I'm okay then.
And I think that covers it generally. There's some clarifying points later in, about application of the chapter for variances, but that summarizes the changes and subject to your questions, I would yield the floor to whoever else would like to discuss.
Any questions?
Mayor.
Alderman.
On building, construction, or repair on paragraph four dash 10, where we have the 7:00 AM till 9:00 PM.
What page, what page on?
Four, four. Four of 10.
Four dash 10, paragraph six.
What page?
Four.
Four. Dash 10.
Four of 10.
Paragraph six.
Six, okay.
I think we need to take in consideration daylight savings time, because nine o'clock in daylight savings times is a different issue than nine o'clock during non-daylight savings time, so perhaps to change that time to eight o'clock and that could simplify it through both daylight savings times or regular saving time.
Is there any, right now, we've just, we're just explaining this, so there's actually no motion to amend.
Just to consider that as a, as a change of that paragraph. Yeah, yes, sir.
Is this occurring?
Excuse me?
Is this occurring presently?
Yes.
Is it going to create a hardship on a contractor or a construction company?
Well, I mean, if you're next door to somebody and they're out there, you know, hammering nails at nine o'clock at night, it's up to you.
Let me make this suggestion, why don't we keep that as a point and then, you know, that might be an option to consider as an amendment at the council meeting when we actually go forward adopting this. This is sort of get this for the public is what my hope is.
Okay, and the other, other issue I want to discuss on page five dash 10, paragraph P, B, I'm sorry, number three, para three under B, where it talks about movement of aircraft. I remember within the last four or five years, we've had a helicopter that was doing some landing in residential areas and was carrying passengers and we had a considerable amount of neighbors that were upset about that and I was thinking that we could put something in there. The FAA can issue approval for a helicopter to land in a residential area, but if we could have some, the city be the one to approve it before it goes to the FAA. I don't really know how that would work or if it would work.
I'd have to research whether the FAA will delegate to us any regulatory authority and I can't answer that question off the top of my head.
I would, I would be a little, maybe, who knows? I mean, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. They vary, they're usually reluctant to give us, but cities can do things that, you know, that aren't otherwise prohibited, so, you know, it's an interesting question. I really don't know the answer.
And if we, if we can't, then we can figure out how loud a helicopter is when you put that in the DB as a specific issue, because it was, it was a real significant thing that day when that thing was going on. It was nice perhaps for the people that were there, but the neighbors didn't like it at all.
Yeah, and then one thing we could do is certainly work with the, I know we permitted helicopter landings down here at the river, so it wouldn't be but a hop, skip if they, you know, if we wanted to try to accommodate somebody into an area that would be a little bit more, or a little bit less residential and, you know, within a four or five minute drive, so.
Yes, sir.
That's a good point. So if you can look at that, our city attorney, and let us know whether we got the right to legislate in there. All right, what I would propose then is that, I know, I think we've got an order to amend, we normally go ahead and move for adoption, but that'll be more procedural, so if I can take a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, what I, I'll open for a motion to amend by the substitution of this that has been passed out to the council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this motion to amend? Have we read, did we read, you know, we read this, okay.
We're going to hold it though, right?
Yeah, we are going to hold it. Yeah, we're not going to vote on it. This is just amend it with this document so the, principally so the public will have the opportunity to see what's before us. On the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
All right, now unless there are any other questions, I'll go ahead and at the direction of Alderwoman Robinson, go ahead and hold this for the next council meeting and again indicate that there'll be continuation of the public hearing.
I've got two other copies, I can just leave.
Okay. For whomever?
Whose piece?
Excuse me? I'm not following you?
Yeah, just for who, if somebody wants them.
Okay. We'll have additional copies and I believe also on our website that this will be published.
Okay.
All right, let's go back to the regular agenda item. No, wait a minute, that's our noise control hearing. I'll go ahead and recess that until the next council meeting, 7:05. I also note that we're to convene a public hearing on mobile storage containers. I think Alderman Witcher, that's your legislation. Let me go ahead and convene that public hearing and then turn the microphone over to you unless Alderman Parker had something.
I just had a, I'm just curious, Alderman Gaines mentioned it and I'm curious too. Folks that are here for the public hearing, are they not going to have an opportunity to speak to that?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I guess I just was neglecting that, because we do have a public hearing. Let me, let me retrace my comments and now that we've taken care of a little paperwork, anyone who is here for the public hearing regarding the noise control ordinance, please come to the microphone, state your name and offer your comments. And before we do it, we're proud to see that Alder, or at least state representative Sharon Dobbins is in the audience. We want to welcome Sharon and again, she's been here before. And thank her for her tireless efforts for us out at the Capitol this past session. Yes, ma'am.
Well, as everybody knows, I'm Patricia Harris and I live in Rose City, but I work downtown five days a week. And good evening, everyone. Today, tween 1:30 and 2:00, a neighbor of mine called. You know, there are people that sleep during the day. We're not all of us lucky enough to go to bed when we want to and get up when we want to. There's a lot of people that gets off at 7:00 in the morning and are lucky to get eight hours of sleep. Well, this one lady called me and she was under a stretch. She lives about a block and a half from me and she says, Ms. Pat, I'm on my porch right now and I'm on my cellphone and I would like for you to listen. And I did. It, I heard the music. The music was coming from, almost off of my doorstep. And I said, where is that? And she said, it's on the corner of Boyer in Proto. And I said, have you called the comp center? And she said, yes, I have. Well, there was two officers that came out. Some of them was a little reluctant. We asked for a report. I don't know if one, I'll have to go back and ask her if they got a report. But when I got home this afternoon, I questioned several of my neighbors. Well, they were in the yard. People love to sit in their yard if they're lucky. If we're, today we're out walking in water. But when a car will drive up in front of a house and you think you're hearing Stars and Stripes, you know, that music, even if it's played quietly, it's noisy. Well, I don't care what time of day it is, whenever you can hear music a block and a half away is too loud. I believe in people getting together in their yards and having family get together, sorry, even having supper outside together, family being with family and playing their radio that's fine, but you ought not hear it a block and a half away. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone still open?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mary McFadden. I live at 25 Cliffwood Circle, Zenick Hill. I'm not for sure of what is in this ordinance, but I would like to have included excessive noise from cars and groups of people that gather in my neighborhood next door to me from 12:00 AM to 4:35 AM in the morning. We have people parked, if you know where Cliffwood Circle is, we have people parked on both sides of the street, which makes it utterly impossible for emergency vehicles to come in and out at certain times and that goes on occasionally from 12:00 at night until 4:00 in the morning and we would like to have it addressed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carter, do you know if that issue has application in this legislation?
Absolutely. This ordinance applies to both motor vehicular sounds and also any kind of sounds that's admitted with more restrictive rules being, you know, after 11:00 at night.
So the answer to your question is, is it does apply and this would help us in dealing with excessive noise from motor vehicles, as you spoke. Mayor? Just a second. Alderman Gaines and then Height.
Does, I agree, I heard what you said, does it apply though? Would it be under like a decibel level or would it be 30 feet like it would for just hearing it outside? Because it appears to me like it'd be better if it was a penalty for being 30, if they made noise 30 feet from where they were standing as opposed to a decibel level. You hear what I'm saying? Because I don't know where it is in there.
The decibel level rules apply to how, and the, the 30 feet work together. In other words, you measure sound 30 feet from where they're making it, right? And, and that's where you check the decibel level reading to find out how much noise is being made.
But in one place, place to hear it says, if you can hear it from 30 feet away.
Right, well.
Would it be more effective for Mrs. McFadden, wouldn't it if she could immediately call the police and say that, you know, they're out in front of my house, it's 30 feet away?
Yeah, one of the problems especially that I found out when I was talking to the people up in Fayetteville that they run into is that some sounds carry more than other sounds do. And some sounds attune your ear more than other sounds do. Like very rhythmic sounds can grab your ear at a lower level than other sounds do. And that's where, that's what attaches our plainly audible exception in there, where there are certain sounds that should not be plainly audible at more than 30 feet regardless of the decibel level reading. Does that answer your question?
Not really, because I don't see whether some sounds are a little higher pitch, lower pitch or whatever. But if wakes her up 30 feet away, no matter what that sound would, just to me, I'm just one person out of eight. To me, that's the, that's what the penalty should be for waking her up or anyone else in the neighborhood like that.
One of the difficulties in, in that, and of course, anyone can, can respond, is, 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 you know, the, the subjective nature of trying, I mean, some people may have exceptional hearing. And then if it wakes them up or 99 other people in the same situation, it wouldn't wake up. So that's why I think that the sponsors have gone to a decibel reading plus a footage because you have a fairly definitive way to gauge a violation. Is that?
Absolutely. The main reason why we've structured the ordinance in the fashion that we have with decibel limits and, and set measurements is because when we go to court, we have to prove our case beyond a reasonable doubt. That's what the state always has to do. And, and to say, well, you played your music too loud or, you know, you woke this person up. Well, what are the sensibilities of the person that you woke up? You get into a proof issue where it's hard to establish a case beyond a reasonable doubt. Whereas when we can take a decibel level measurement at a certain feet and declare a number beyond that decibel level measurement to be unlawful, it, it kind of narrows down the law. It helps us establish our case when our police officers write a ticket for a violation.
Now, what we have an option to do is if these levels don't prove to be as, as the amendments have shown, they, you know, they, they've raised the decibel levels up. If for some reason these decibel levels don't prove to do the job, then the council will have the opportunity, I think, Alderman, to address what you said by coming back in and lowering the decibel levels to an amount that would be perhaps more likely to let somebody sleep.
What, go ahead. One other question is quick, and this for the people out there because they've called me about it too. And they wonder how it would work, for example, let's just use Cliffwood again. So Mrs. McFadden calls. The way, the way it's been explained, or maybe I'm absolutely wrong, but they have to have a decibel level meter when the police arrive, right?
Right, if, if a noise, the concept of the operation, I would say, is if somebody calls in with a sound complaint, then when the police officer responds to the call, he'll get the sound meter to, to take to the call.
But, but won't they break up their little meeting or be gone or whatever the time, when they see the squad cars come?
They might.
They might, okay. Thank you.
Alderman Height and then Alderman Ross.
That, that was the second question that I have. The first question is, did she refer to parking on Cliffwood? Did she refer to parking?
She did. She referred that parking was a problem for access to emergency vehicles.
And I think her, her question was. And, and I thought her question was, does this ordinance address that issue of parking on both sides of the street?
No, that wasn't it. When they have parties, cars are parked on both sides of the street, which makes it utterly impossible for you to get in and out or an emergency vehicle to come in.
Let me, let me just say this. I know Chief Bradley is out in the audience. Chief Bradley is out in the audience. I, I believe that there ought to be something on the books now that if a, if parking is done in a way that restricts access, that we have the opportunity. That's some sort of violation. At the very minimum, it'd allow us to tow the vehicles away that would prevent for ingress and egress, not only for emergency vehicles, but also for the safety of those who are in that area that's otherwise maybe blocked. I don't think, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and all, and all city attorney can address that, that there very well ought to be something on the books that, that if, if people are blocking a street that prevents access through that right of way, that we can, we can take steps to clear that right of way.
Go ahead. It's unlawful to block a street, to block access through a street. You can park along the sides of a street as long as parking is not prohibited there, but you can't block a street. That is unlawful.
So what we're saying is that if, if you have, if, if your street is being blocked at any time, you know, by parking, all you need to do is notify the Northern Park Police Department and they should come out absent, you know, priorities. Of course, obviously, you know, this wouldn't be a top priority call, but it certainly would be addressed and, and they would take steps to clear the right of way in a way that people could get by.
Yeah. I'm spreading hairs here, but is there a difference between parking on both sides of the street and blocking traffic on a street?
Well, obviously there is. I mean, I can answer that. I mean, you park on both sides of the street if it's permitted. But then if that street is so narrow where it ends up blocking ability of a car or an average sized vehicle to get through, then, then that would be blocking the street. Now, you know, you know, absent other parking restrictions, if there's no restriction of parking, then people can, can do that. But, you know, the last person in, if they stretched their car out so far where it'd be blocking the access through there, then they would be blocking the street and they'd be subject to being towed.
Well, I, let me cite you an example over on Randolph. There was a family that was having a garage sale virtually every Saturday and people were parking on both sides of the street. And one Saturday morning, a fire truck tried to come down Randolph heading toward John F. Kennedy Boulevard and was unable to access Randolph and had to go around. A few days later, no parking signs went up on one side of that street. But the argument that I had, I didn't have an argument, the discussion that Mr. Marvin and I had was that in the absence of a no parking sign, it's, it's lawful to park on both sides of the street.
Sure, absolutely, but it's not lawful to block, you know, access.
I understand that.
And, and so when somebody, you know, does that, then their cars are subject to being towed and that includes your emergency vehicle.
I agree. So then the answer to this, to Ms. McFadden's question is, is does this ordinance address that issue of blocking or parking on both sides of the street? The answer is no. And the second question I had that carried at Alderman Gaines' approach was, how are we going to enforce this? If someone calls at 12:30 AM in the morning and someone's playing a loud radio out on their street and they see the policeman drive up and they turn their radio off, how are we going to enforce that loud noise that was prevalent a few minutes prior to that?
Well, it's just like any violation, particularly a misdemeanor, that unless it's committed in the presence of a police officer, and Chief, you can come up here if you want to add anything to this, you know, the only way would be for a citizen to have a meter and to testify that they did it and that that's what it was. I'm not even sure, Mr. City Attorney, that would qualify. It'd certainly be kind of risky. So, you know, we're back to the old problem of, of, if somebody's going to have a party, you know, they, and they want to avoid detection, they better pretty well be prepared to turn it down before anybody gets there. But a lot of the instances, I don't think that the folks are going to have a, a, a police scout waiting on, you know, one of us to show up with a, with a sound meter. Chief, you want to add any comments to that real quick? Kind of like speeding. I mean, you know, it's one of those that you're going to catch some, but there're going to be a lot more that, that, you know, that, that get away. But hopefully there'll be law abiding people that take notice of what's, what's a violation. Chief?
Good evening. I don't know that I have a good answer to your question, but our intent is if this ordinance passes, we're going to buy a number of the sound detection devices and have not every patrol car, but some patrol cars at all times equipped with them. And we anticipate them being able to answer these calls. You're exactly right. If someone's sitting in a car and they see a police car coming, got their music turned up, they're probably going to turn it down. You know, I don't know what we do about that. If it becomes persistent, we'll try to get a little bit more creative in how to deal with it. But there's going to be a lot of instances where the noise is coming from a house or maybe a car parked on private property. And, and so I think it is enforceable. I think it will do some good. Will people be able to, to beat us to the punch sometimes? Probably so. But like I say, if it's a persistent problem that continues on, then we'll try to find some creative way to deal with it.
And I think that probably is the direction that a tool like this is going to be most effective for those neighbors who don't want to be good neighbors. Alderman Ross?
Well, one of the things, you know, if the police show up and they turn the radio down, that's what we want them to do. That's what this whole thing is about, is to get them to turn down their volume. So, that's basically. And on these, the different decibel levels, this amendment, this is just to raise them higher because I'd rather be able to enforce it than go in and do something that's just absolutely so low that no one's going to want to enforce it.
Microphone's still open?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable council members. My name is Roger Hawkins. I live in Rose City. I work for the state of Arkansas by the state capitol, Department of Finance Administration. I work down at Rumba Revolution Restaurant in the evenings. I ride a motorcycle. That's the only vehicle I own. I commute 15,000 miles a year. And I just represent, I probably, it looks like I'm representing probably all the motorcyclists, the millions of motorcyclists across the country that travel and will be traveling here to North Little Rock, you know, on occasions. But it's my primary mode of transportation. And when I come home from my night job, sometimes it's 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. I keep, I, my, my motorcycle's exhaust system is rated at 105 decibels. I can quiet that down by five decibels with what's called quiet baffles and that would still be 100 decibels. I've never had a neighbor call the police on me or complain about me. It's, it's the way, it's the way the person is accelerating on their motorcycle that drives up the sound. If you're just putting along, you know, it doesn't bother anybody. We all know, everybody likes, you know, a nice sounding, sounding motorcycle. They don't want a motorcycle, most, most of us don't want motorcycles that sound like sewing machines. I'm not against a noise, noise ordinance, but I'm against the, I, I understand you've modified the Fayetteville decibel levels and raised it up from the Fayettevilles. But Fayetteville was, is different than North Little Rock. And the issue up there in Fayetteville, they'd have the big festival every October, bikes, blues and barbecue. And they, and the, the business people would draw those people into the community, right into the middle, heart of downtown. Hundreds of thousands, 250,000, 300,000 motorcyclists come and contribute to the economy of that community. And then, of course, now the noise ordinance has passed up there and there's, and the people that, the promoters are talking about moving it out of that city. Okay? I read the news article in the Arkansas Times and someone has made the comment about returning decency to our community. I'd just like to say on the behalf of all motorcyclists that we are a decent bunch of people. We contribute a lot to the economy and, and do a lot of charity work. I, I specifically support organization, this Christian Motorcycle Association and organizations that take Christmas presents to, down to the Arkadelphia Human Development Center and, and the folks that give teddy bears to the Plaski County Police Department on their program to distribute teddy bears to children, you know, when the police are going to domestic disputes at homes. Another big issue is safety. There's a saying among motorcyclists that loud exhaust systems save lives. If you're, if you're on a motorcycle, you know it's, you know, you know you're taking a risk. But you can lower that risk a, a little bit by making the car aware that the car you're passing, you're in their blind spot, making that car aware that you're there. I, I, when I'm, when I'm, I was recently passing a car on a motorcycle of my friends that just had stock motorcycle pipes and I was almost run off the road because an elderly, elderly gentleman had his windows up, air conditioning on, of course, and who knows, could be on the cellphone or whatever. He, he couldn't hear me coming around him, so I was almost run off the road. I understand that there's exceptions being made for the, like the construction industry and stuff. Well, you know, that's, I'm a, I work for a living and this is part of my liv, you know, commuting is part of my living, you know? And you made the comment, the standards, it's, it's where the rubber meets the road. Okay, I'd like the standards to be set so the motorcyclists don't meet the road. I, I see that there's representatives of the motorcycle industry here in, in the audience. And one of, like Yamaha's newest campaign is to, that they'll make the motorcycle for each individual. Okay, and that's one of the selling point, you know, points of their concerns. Like I said, I'm not against noise amendment. I, I've been following this in the paper. I know that there was an issue about loud music on the riverfront with someone using profanity. And I understand that, you know, that'd be very objectionable.
Alls I can ask is that the council consider raising this 88 decibels to a reasonable perhaps 98 decibels. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask that gentleman a question?
Yeah. If he wants to answer a question, Alderman Height?
You stated a few, you stated a few minutes ago that the decibel level on your motorcycle was 105 or 110?
105.
And you could lower that by five?
Yes, sir.
Decibels down to 100. How was that measured?
Uh, that, that was what the industry representative for Vance and Hines Motorcycle Exhaust Pipes gave me.
So you don't know at what distance their, their measuring device measured that then?
Oh, sir. I just took that on there for their word.
I think the minimum would be 30 feet on this.
Our measurement would be taken at 30 feet, Mayor, which if measurement taken next to the vehicle of 105 would be substantially less at 30 feet.
See, what we're saying is that, that the minimum distance that we would take a decibel reading would be 30 feet. So it's not, I, I'm assuming your decibel reading might have been right next to the engine itself. And rest assured, you know, I don't think any of us are wanting to outlaw motorcycles by any means.
Yes, sir.
And I've become very much aware over recent times about the, the concern about, you know, noise being beneficial in some instances to safety. So, and the other thing I want to mention too, whatever this council does, you know, can be done or modified at least twice a month, perhaps even more often if we call special meetings. So, you know, I, I think what we're trying to do, and again, I'm not speaking for the sponsors, but, you know, is to, is to give this community a tool that will address those who abuse their neighbors.
Yes, sir. And, I mean, what I'd like is, is also to say to the chief of police is ask that, you know, the police, you just use, you know, look at it with a grain of salt, case by case. You know, when, you know, if someone is obviously drag racing or something and driving, you know, above the speed limit, they're going to have a louder sound right there. And, but when someone's just, you know, I, when I come home from work, you know, and it's in the morning and I still don't get complaints because I'm being very soft, I'm being very easy on my throttle and, you know, slipping into the neighborhood. Thank you.
Got one more quick question, Jason, if you have.
Let's see, is there any other, any more comments? Did you want to ask?
Jason, just one quick.
Oh, I, I think that's, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we, I think Alderman Gaines had. I think we, I think Alderman Gaines has a quick question.
Real quick, we had, we've got some liberal people in the third ward and they're concerned, and you may have said this, and I don't know, and it's just for them, but does a constituent trigger this or can the police be driving along and their decibels be 105 and trigger a ticket and arrest somebody? How does that work?
The police, the police can take action on whatever they observe.
Whatever it is.
But normally it is complaint driven. It is a complaint driven process.
I mean, you got, you've got to remember, to be honest with you, now, this is not going to be a big priority. I mean, it'll be a priority when it's complaint driven, but in terms of the energies and efforts that the Northern Rock Police Department have, we're not going to have people running around here with sound meters. You know, they got far more important things and I don't mean when it's a quality of life issue and it's your next door neighbor keeping you up all day or all night, that it's not real important. And so, you know, at least as far as, as my direction goes, should this be adopted, it's going to primarily be complaint driven. We're not going to have sound police running around here with decibel meters, you know, trying to find folks that are, you know, maybe revving their motorcycle up a little too high because, you know, I may be one of the first arrestees on that. Any other comments? The microphone's still open. Let me go ahead and recess this public hearing until the next council meeting. We'll do it at 7:05 again. And now let me get back to the public hearing regarding mobile storage containers. I'm going to go ahead and convene that public hearing and turn over a brief introduction to Alderman Witcher since it's his legislation.
Thank you, Mayor. For some time now, portable storage containers have been appearing in our city on a regular basis in both residential areas and commercial areas. The Planning Commission, with the help of the staff, looked at some, some possible regulations regarding use of those containers. And, and most of the requirements that they set out are just common sense, common courtesy issues. There are some limitations that have been proposed by the Planning Commission for use in residential areas as well as commercial. That being a 30-day period in a residential area and a 60-day in a commercial area. And these, you know, I don't think any of these are really hard and fast at this point. But the Planning Commission did have a series of public hearings, and one of which was on June the 12th. And then after that hearing, there were eight affirmative votes and one absent regarding this issue. So what I'd like to do is read this ordinance one time, well, this will be the second reading, and then give anyone from the public an opportunity to visit with us about it. And my intent is to hold it until the next council meeting and then see if we need to make any revisions in it or if any council members have any questions or comments about it and work through those changes and then pass it.
Well, without objection, we'll go ahead and ask Ms. Whitby to read it.
This is an ordinance amending section 12 dot 22, mobile storage containers of ordinance number 7697, the zoning ordinance, second reading.
With that introduction, let me go ahead and open this council meeting for public comment on this. Does anyone want to care to come to the microphone about this issue, mobile storage containers?
Mayor, I know Robert might have some additions that he, he might.
Boys, you're going to be the public tonight.
This was generated by the Planning Commission over the last few years. Y'all recall last year, we dealt with the pods in the residential areas. It was brought to the attention of the planning, at the meetings that several of our restaurants and stores are starting to use these seagoing cargo containers. They're not permitted. They're not reviewed by the city and they've just been used as storage on an ongoing basis. We've checked around, Little Rock has been restricting these and this ordinance would do the same. It does, I think it's restricted to the commercial areas, not the industrial. They're not to be used as primary structures. They're used for two months in one year and the permits required and they're to be placed in the backyards. So y'all might look around. There's one on a restaurant behind, on Camp Robinson Road, on McCain, other places in our commercial districts, they've started using these large seagoing type containers and the Planning Commission believes that's unsightly for our community and wants them restricted. So it was generated by the commission and I've, our staff has not received specific calls or complaints on those, but it was generated by the Planning Commission.
Questions?
Robert? Mayor?
Alderman Height?
It's my night for questions, I guess. Section 1222, number A4, A3, excuse me. It says if possible, mobile storage containers should be placed in the rear yard. Many times in a residential area, that's the only place they can put those is going to be in their driveway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Many, many times, but those are being used for moving furniture or for remodeling type projects. Pods has become a popular new business and so we wanted to put a restriction last year and we did that through the zoning ordinance. This is a new section out of the zoning ordinance that we're proposing for commercial districts.
Oh, commercial, okay. The big, let me ask this question too, Robert. The biggest problem we've probably had with pods in residential areas is they're longer than 30 days.
That's right.
On site.
That's, that's right. There were some large, again, seagoing cargo containers being placed at houses in some of our best neighborhoods and left there for over a year while construction was going on. And the Planning Commission suggested that be restricted and especially now that the pods company has come in renting these out. Now, they will let you fill up the pod, take it to a storage site and it'll, like a mini storage, brought to your home. So that's sort of a new business. But we did restrict metal, mobile containers in the residential areas to 30-day period. And that was done last year after public hearings. This is a, this section being added under commercial.
Of course, with any of our ordinances or codes, there's always an exception to every, to every rule, right? There's some, in some instances, we have allowed them to stay there or remain there longer than 30 days, correct?
Well, there, in many cases, we're not aware of them being there. A lot of these commercial areas, we're not aware that these were there and.
I'm talking about residential, in residential areas.
Certainly. Now, we are asking the pods company to get permits and we're trying to get a fax system because a lot of these are being delivered during the weekends. So that's been problematic and we're trying to keep up with that. So it is a problem with monitoring.
Thank you.
Alderman Ross this time, and then Alderman Gaines.
Okay, this, on the residential, it's a no-fee permit?
That's right.
On the commercial, will it be a no-fee permit also?
Oh, that's what we were proposing and we just want to track them.
Okay, then I just think it should say no-fee permit in there if it is a no-fee. I think that needs to be added.
It's been read, but it's really not on for any amendments at this point, you know, because there's no move, motion for adoption. It's being read and held. So it's up to the council, but I might suggest we save those amendments till the next time. Any other comments? Alderman Witcher, unless you have any direction, otherwise we'll go ahead and recess this public hearing until the next council meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. I think we're ready to go to new business. Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you call the first one?
Resolution 0784, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a network operating agreement with Energy Services Incorporated as agent for the energy operating companies in order to facilitate the transmission of power and energy to the city of North Little Rock.
Let me just mention these two as well as, let's see, those two deal with by and large, just simply an extension of, of what we have presently. We worked through these two agreements when we went to a Duke Power five years ago and correct me, Mr. Gertz, if I'm wrong. This gives us access to the, the grid system that is energies and so, you know, feel free, anybody that has any questions, but these two just simply deal with extending that existing network was, has it given us opportunities that we otherwise would have to redo this again if we didn't have it. Does anyone have any questions? And I'll ask Mr. Gertz to come to the microphone. This is simply an extension of what we have. Mr. Gertz, I don't see anybody asking any questions right now, so unless they do, you're welcome to stay there. With that, does I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Abstain due to conflict.
Mr. Witcher works for energy, so he will be abstaining because of a potential conflict.
Resolution 0785, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a network integration transmission service agreement with Energy Services Incorporated as agent for the energy operating companies to facilitate the transmission of power and energy to the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Abstain.
Resolution 0786, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an energy attributes sale agreement with Green Mountain Energy Company.
Move for adoption.
Second. Before I call for a vote, this is simply an extension of what we've done a number of years and Green Mountain has purchased our energy attributes that we receive from our hydro plant. There is one change and one preview that I'm going to mention to the council. First of all, the, the one change is, is that with a 90-day notice period, we can withdraw some of those attributes depending on, you know, depending on a program we're developing that will give people the opportunity who choose to essentially purchase green power. There are utilities around the country that give people who are interested in doing that, obviously, I think we all know that there's becoming a stronger and stronger movement towards supporting renewable energy and, and, you know, our hydro plant obviously is renewable. Unfortunately, right now, it's been so renewable with water in Oklahoma, those of you who have asked to say a prayer for rain in Oklahoma to help fuel our hydro plant can turn it off now a little bit if you, if you would, because, you know, we're over 200, 200,000 cubic feet per second right now and, and, and so there's virtually zero, if not very little, drop between the top part of Murray and the bottom part of Murray and therefore our hydro plant is virtually inoperable at this point. We are taking the time to try to, you know, do some maintenance with it, but the high water, normally I'm told we have 10 days a year of, of water of this magnitude and we're into about our seventh or eighth week, if not longer. So we're, we're suffering perhaps not as bad as some of those who are being flooded, but we're still yet being affected by that. So what this would do is, is allow us to withdraw some of those which we have sold in the past with the development of that program and the offering it to some of our citizens. Obviously, the, the cost would be equal to, maybe even greater than what our normal power cost would be, but they would be able to acquire green, literally green energy in, in terms of their choice. Now, you know, in some states, and I hope Arkansas soon joins those ranks, you can have various state and perhaps even in the future federal credits when you acquire that kind of energy, but that's not available in Arkansas at present. The second thing that I would intend to do, and I asked Mr. Gertz in the electric department to work on this, you know, again, I want to acknowledge Sharon Dobbins, who's one of our legislators, went and, and right up to the 11th hour, I guess the 11th hour plus 59 minutes, was working on legislative authority with the state to give us an opportunity to help support our low to moderate income customers in some way more than what we've been able to under Arkansas law in the past. And that was adopted by the General Assembly and it would be my recommendation that we direct, and I think, Mr. Gertz, we're looking at $70,000 to $80,000 in potential revenue. I would hope we could up that sum to at least in the neighborhood of $100,000 in order to fund a low to moderate income assistance program. And Mr. Gertz, I'd asked to work on that. We were unable to complete that for this council meeting. So in all likelihood, I hope we'll be ready for the next council meeting to make that recommendation. I know we're into a protracted period of, of heat and I know many of our customers are having some challenges, obviously, in paying our higher cost of power. And so, you know, it would be my intent to take all of the money that we receive from this and hopefully able to add to it to support that program and we'll have that before the council at the next meeting. With that, if there are no questions, I'll ask Ms. Whitby to call.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0787, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring the intent of the city of North Little Rock regarding sewer system improvements project.
This is simply taking steps. Mr. Mills is here if any questions are asked to authorize the wastewater department to exercise some opportunities to get some low interest rate funds. If I have any questions, he's here. If not, excuse me?
I'd like to.
Sure. Why don't we go ahead and get a motion if I could?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Mr. Mills, you want to come to the microphone? We've got a question.
I was just curious about how this works and the bonds explain to us about what it costs, what you, that type of thing. If there's any rate increase or nothing like that, right?
Well, it's, it is a rate-based loan. It's state and federally funded. It's called a revolving loan fund. We have a window of opportunity to get up to $14 million to fund these projects at a rate of 2.75%. This resolution of intent and another one that's on the agenda tonight, a resolution of signatory authority is part of the process for us to satisfy application for those loans. And this letter of intent identifies the projects that we'll be doing over the next three years. In the resolution, they're identified as a modification to the White Oak Sewer Treatment Plant, replacement of three old pump station, generators at all three of our treatment plants, and some interceptor work. All of these things are due to either capacity issues or regulatory issues.
Passage issues, what does that mean? What does passage issues mean?
Capacity.
A capacity issue. Oh, capacity, I'm sorry.
The primary capacity issue we have is at the White Oak Treatment Plant. Right now, that plant is 4.25 million gallons a day treatment and the modification that we're designing and will build will double the size of that plant. And that's brought on, of course, by the, all of the growth in the Malmell area, the industrial parks just west of the treatment plant and for additional growth in the future.
Okay. Garrett, is, is this the first step thing? I'm not familiar with, you know, familiar with stocks and bonds and all that. So this is the first step? You're going to come back with something else to enable, are you going to select a bondsman? Maybe I should be asking Jason.
Well, if you want to look at the, there's, I don't know why these weren't back to back, but there's R 0789 now that essentially is, is authorizing the director, and correct me again if I'm wrong, Mr. Mills, to actually borrow this money.
That, that is right.
So there won't be a, necessarily be a return to this council. Now, let me just make sure, you know, that, that as we deal with this, you know, the council is aware of what Mr. Mills has been sharing, I know with me, and I think I've shared this a time or two with the council, that we were looking at a rate increase sometime this year, you know, in, in order to, you know, be able to sustain the operations of the wastewater department. We are going to be having a presentation in August, the first council meeting in August that essentially will be an application to get this council, to authorize council to approve a rate increase that would generally be geared to take place October, actually October the first. So, you know, I'm not presupposing what this council would do, but certainly want to make everyone aware that, you know, the information is gonna be forthcoming, we're gonna be presented, it'll be presented to us, and we'll have to be, we'll have to, you know, decide on the propriety of that need. I know that, again, Mr. Mills has been talking to me for a year, certainly a half a year or better, about the likelihood and the most probability, which is now, you know, at least in my mind, gonna become a reality, and we'll have to start dealing with this the first council meeting of October, not October, first council meeting of August.
Okay, then, what does, remember, what does this allow them to do?
What this allows them to do is to borrow some money from, what's the interest rate on this fund?
2.75%.
Yeah, which is an exceptionally good interest rate. It allows them to borrow the money from this fund, which is set up to, and then I'll ask Mr. Carter comment, to borrow money from this fund to do those projects that were named, and obviously, that money would be paid back with revenues, some of which may very well be reflected in an increase if we choose to adopt it, you know, sometime in perhaps late July or early August. No, late August or early September. Mr. Carter?
First thing I want to do, Mayor, is to agree that those two resolutions should have been filed together, and I didn't put them in the stack together, so that one's my fault. They shouldn't have had one in between the two of them. The other one is, other point I wanted to make was to clarify that this resolution, the intent of it, is to meet the IRS code for the point in time in which we make the commitment that we intend to incur debt for reimbursement purposes, so that any costs that we incur after today, as far as bond council goes or anything like that, they would be rolled into the bond note, it wouldn't have to come out of operational expenses.
So, this first one is essentially, you know, does not have any operational, any activity with regard to indebtedness, except to the extent that any debt that's incurred can be justifiable for IRS purposes and being reimbursable. It's the 0789 that is authorizing, Mr. Mills, to actually, on behalf of the wastewater department, to borrow the funds.
This pertains to that, I don't ask the attorney something, is that okay? I have a lot of respect for Mr. Mills and what he does, a lot of respect. Under the Freedom of Information Act, though, could he have contacted me or someone on that commission about what this was all about tonight?
Sure.
Would one person could, or he could have, somebody, I'm not trying to be defensive or touch, I'm not gonna be, but this is, you know, a big deal, start down the road, and some things, you know, just would like to have been contacted about, but he could have, some surcommission or something like that could have, because this was kind of brought to bear kind of this me calling him out of the audience, you know. The mayor could, we talk sometimes, I don't know if that violates Freedom of Information Act or not.
We talk a lot. I mean, I talk to every council member.
One person and one alderman could have been, one mayor and one alderman could have been talking, is that right?
Right. No secret meetings.
Right, no secret meetings.
You can have a meeting between the two of you, just no secret council meetings, right?
Alderman Gaines, if I have omitted an opportunity to discuss this with you, I apologize, but I have invited each of the aldermen, and I thought you as well, to come to my office and view a presentation prepared by the economists that have determined the need for these projects. Again, that presentation is still available to you at any time you want to come by and look at it. The same presentation will be given here on the first night that we introduce the ordinance for consideration, and at that night, we'll set a date for public hearings as well. But I think each and every alderman has known that this was coming up for a number of months, at least three and more likely six months.
Any further questions on the first?
I guess I had one question. Maybe you might tell us what you expect the increase to the, to our customers as a result of this.
Let me just answer that. I don't, this may have some effect on that because of the debt incurred and the dollars that would be used to pay it back. The increase, as I am told, and I just had a visit with Mr. Mills today, you know, subject to the council's decision, the recommendation's gonna be to, for the increase to be in effect beginning August the first of this year.
But, I guess, October the first. October the first.
Did I say August, I meant October the first?
The amount, though, again, was just.
Alderman, what we will propose on that night is a stepped increase over a five-year period. The increases will be determined by the financing we need during that period for each project that occurs during that three-year period. My recollection is, and don't hold me to this, that the first increase would be in the neighborhood of 9%, and then they'll go down from there over the next five years. And I recall that the last two are 2.5% each, but I don't recall exactly what the ones in between are.
Well, one other thing that we might add, too, and we'll get into this in much greater depth as soon as the legislation's filed, but my understanding, too, is when all is said and done, we'll still be significantly less than our neighbors across the street. Mr. Mills, do you have any?
That's right. We'll still be at less half the rate that Little Rock is charging their customers. At any point of consideration over the five-year period, we'll still be half the cost of the Little Rock wastewater fees.
Again, that's assuming that this council acts, so without, you know, I didn't want to have anybody, you know, not recall that while this is not directly a rate increase, you know, there are needed actions, and I can't tell you that, you know, that some of the revenue that would be addressed in the rate increase may help to repay this debt. From a timing standpoint, we need to go ahead and make application for these funds, but I didn't want the council to act, not having recalled, what I'm pretty sure we have talked about, as Mr. Mills said on several occasions, that we were very likely, if not most definitely, gonna have to deal with the need for a rate increase this year. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Do you want me to go ahead and call 89?
Why don't we just go ahead and do that while we're here? R-0789.
Yes, sir. A resolution designating and authorizing the director of the North Little Rock Wastewater to execute certain documents in connection with the Arkansas Clean Water Revolving Loan Program administered by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let's go on to R-0788.
Yes, sir. A resolution appropriating $1,030.05 from the Act 833 funds for the purchase of furniture for the North Little Rock Fire Department Training Office.
I think that's pretty self-explanatory. We all know what the 833 funds are, you know, chief, you know, this is qualified expenditure. Chief McCollum would like for us to do that. Do I have a motion? Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0790, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
Witcher and Height.
I think we want it called.
Yes, sir. A resolution appropriating $75,000 from the Drainage Improvement Fund for repairs to Lakewood Lily Pond and Dam Number Four.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On that, let me just mention, I think we've done this occasionally in the past. We all are aware that those series of lakes up there are very beneficial in stormwater retention. We have participated in, I know Lake Number One, I think Lake Number Two. This project far exceeded, I don't know the exact dollar amount, but at the same time, there was repairs done to the dam. If that dam, and many of us, I'm sure, are aware of it, had failed, then, you know, McCain Boulevard, which is one of our major thoroughfares, as we all know, would have been rendered impassable for probably some period of time with the damage that might have been done to it. So, you know, to me, this is a certainly justifiable and very critical in terms of the prevention that was done in making sure that that dam that separated the Lily Pond from that pond above it, and then above that, another two ponds, if I'm not mistaken, would be imperative for us to be a partner with that. So I would hope this council would support it. Alderman, Thomas?
I know you're right. We have done this several times. One thing, I guess, it occurred even today. I think we had departments in our city that was flooded. I don't know, will we be able to help those people? These are, I know, these are lakes that are important, but we have areas of our city that's.
I know, out in your area, I know, we had, we did some major work to Greenley Pump Station about three years ago. I mean, while, you know, at times, you know, and of course, last week, we had some flooding that occurred in the Barren Cross area. That was in large measure due, in fact, totally due to the sticking of a float that was in one of the pumps that normally turns on automatically. We had some flooding that occurred today at Pershing and Percy Machen at the underpass. Those pumps worked, there was simply too much water that came in too short a period of time, and the pumps couldn't get rid of all of it. There are some areas of our city that, many areas, I'd say, that have drainage problems, and we continue to address those on a daily basis. So, you know, while I can say that this is something that's gonna be helpful, we will continue to address all areas of the city in the most responsible way that we can. I know we had a drainage fund up until we had to raise our rates, that the council members very regularly worked on drainage issues. So we're not gonna abandon any area of the city, but there will be times, because some areas are prone to flooding, that there will be too much rain that comes down in a short period of time, that will experience, you know, some flooding, and we will continue to work on that. I know I even talked to various folks today about doing some ditch cleaning work and other things that, you know, our housing authority director spoke to me about Silver City Courts and some problems that we had there, and I asked Mr. Smith to go out and try to see whether there was anything that we could do in that neighborhood. So, now, we're not abandoning any part of the city with this, and we'll continue to work on that, but I still can't say that, you know, I'll sit here next year and say we don't have any drainage problems, or we don't have any flooding problems. We're gonna keep after it.
And this something we'll probably need to do each year?
Oh, this, no. This is a one-time occurrence, just like, you know, the addressing of Lake Number One was, you know, 12 years ago, and, you know, maybe Lake Number Two was six or seven years ago. This, perhaps, you know, Alderman, will not occur again, you know, for 10, 15, 20 years. Any further questions, Alderman Gaines?
The other, 125 is gonna be given by the, what, Lakewood Improvement District, they gonna pay for the rest of it?
Well, they've already paid for it. This project was, you know, I don't know what the total number was, but this was, I'd say, you know, less than half of it, in terms of, way less than half. I don't know what the total amount is, but they've already paid for it, and we're essentially supporting that work to this amount.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I might add that those, I moved to North Little Rock in 1958, and many of the dams and the lakes are at least 50, probably 60 years old up in the Lakewood area that are just, over a period of time, several years, are just wearing out. Well, I would bet you that, you know, I mean, that's been up there for, you're right, 50, 60 years, and I dare say that it'll be in that neighborhood before there may be another need to address this issue. They don't wanna do this every year, and they were by far the largest contributor to this. With that, on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0791, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing support for providing a site in the city of North Little Rock for the historic Arkansas Mercy Train, Mercy Train, authorizing the mayor or his designated to work with the American Legion regarding the relocation.
Do we have an attachment?
Exhibit A was passed out, it should be in front of each of you.
All right, let's get a motion for adoption, then we'll do the attachment.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, do I have a motion to amend by attaching the exhibit that was passed out?
So move.
Second.
On the motion to amend?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Before I call for a vote, let me see if I can recall, I think this council may have passed a resolution accepting or recognizing the Mercy Train, and without going into any great detail, you know, it was, each state was given a box car. Mercy is, thank you, I guess, in French, if anybody wants to help me recall, you know, my foreign language. And after the Second World War, each of the 48 states were given a box car of various French products that recognized their appreciation for all of what the Allies did, and actually, you know, the community did, communities did, in sending over food and relief products and items after the war, and so they sent this to each of the 48 states. Actually, that train was first displayed in North Little Rock. It ultimately ended up in West Memphis, Memphis, West Memphis, and was overseen by the American Legion. They've been working for the city for two or three years now in working to bring it to a suitable location. I may be wrong, but I think this council acknowledged that we would be willing to be the recipient of it. Through the various discussions, we now have located a place that's close to the Submarine Memorial. It certainly fits with the Second World War and its history, and the History Commission has worked with the American Legion and all have acknowledged that, subject to the council's okay, that the X marks the spot, or will mark the spot of where that box car may be located. Yes, ma'am.
As far as funds, is this, I mean, is this gonna cost us? Is the American Legion paying for it?
The Legion, as I understand it, Sandra Taylor's out in the audience nodding yes, is gonna take care of all the costs associated with it.
Okay. Maintenance, everything afterwards, I mean, it's cool?
Well, now, I imagine there'll be some volunteer maintenance. I don't know that, you know, maintenance is gonna be minimal, but, you know, I'm sure we, you know, we can address the maintenance, but the cost of moving, and when I say we, I'm talking about the community, I'm not necessarily talking about our workforce. Any other questions? On the motion? To adopt is amended.
There's not a motion.
All right, then, let's get one.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Move and seconded to adopt is amended, on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0792, Alderman Height?
Please call it.
A resolution establishing a task force to pursue designation of North Little Rock as a bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists.
Mayor, one slight quick comment. A year or so ago, we, this council adopted some legislation establishing a mission for the city of North Little Rock to obtain a Bicycle Friendly Community Award from the League of American Bicyclists. What we did that night was kinda like putting a football on the 20-yard line and didn't send 11 offensive players out to move the football for the goal. So this bit of legislation establishes a task force that will carry out the, hopefully achieve the objective, and that is to get the designation from the League of American Bicyclists, the Bicycle Friendly Community. That in itself is not going to be an easy task. This legislation does not involve any funds being spent by the city at this time. It only establishes a task force that will work hard and diligently to achieve the award from the League of American Bicyclists of the Bicycle Friendly Community, and it's my understanding that, Mayor, you may have an amendment, and I have an amendment also that needs to be addressed before we pass this legislation.
Let me, and Alderman Height and I talked about this some several weeks ago, and we are continuing to receive ongoing accolades along with the county and in some part, Little Rock, too, for our commitment to trails, obviously, the Big Dam Bridge, on and on, are moving in the direction of becoming a lot more bicycle-friendly. part, Little Rock, too, for our commitment to trails, obviously, the Big Dam Bridge, on and on, are moving in the direction of becoming a lot more bicycle-friendly. So, I asked Alderman Height if he would be willing to consider moving this legislation forward, and obviously, he is. There is one point that, in terms of amendment, we had several additional, perhaps, people that might be interested, and at this hour, you know, I suggested to Alderman Height, if he didn't object, that we might amend Section Four, which you've just been passed out on the second page, that indicates that, you know, that one member-at-large be represented by Gene Pfeiffer. We all know Gene's commitment, his former business relationship with North Little Rock, in addition to his contribution of, you know, over 125 acres, I believe, of land for the bicycle trail in North Little Rock, and then allow three additional members to be appointed by the mayor, and I'd certainly work with the bicycle community and the council in making sure that any one of those appointments that remain be as quickly addressed as we can. I know I've talked to Alderman Height, and we're going to try to have a meeting as soon as this Friday to kick off this effort. So, that amendment essentially would add three positions to the at-large, in addition to Mr. Pfeiffer allowing three to be appointed by the mayor from our community.
And then I have one other one, too, that we want to add. I guess, in this case, it would be Roman numeral number seven.
Would it be okay, Alderman, if we dealt with these one at a time real quick?
Sure.
Why don't we get a motion to adopt this legislation, then?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I think we wanted to amend it, didn't we?
Right. Then, we're going to amend it after we get a motion to adopt. That's sort of the way we usually do it. And then, now, we have a motion made and second to adopt. There has been passed out by the city attorney, that First Amendment that I just discussed. So, you know, we might just move to adopt this recently passed-out version, which simply adds the three members to be appointed by the mayor. Can I get a motion to adopt that amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. Now, we're dealing from this amended version. Alderman Height?
Okay. Then, my amendment, Mr. Carter, would be that in Section One, Section B would add a Roman numeral number seven. I guess that's VII, and that would list the President of Central Arkansas Recreational Peddlers, also known as CARP, C-A-R-P, or a representative appointed by the President of CARP. That's the third entity or third bicycle organization that's present in this county, in this community. That would be my amendment.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, we're in the resolution. So, it'll be full force in effect from the passage, so it's in effect. Does an Alderman have a motion?
That was the motion to adopt is amended.
No, I said, but I'm talking about, now, we've got to choose a chairman, and I think if the council would like.
No, I'd like to prove that Charlie Height be the chairman.
Oh, second.
On that motion, all, please call a row. Who else?
Okay. The motion is that Alderman Height be the chairman.
Right.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
That railroad train just came home. Alderman Height, you're there now.
Quick question, Mayor. Will at some point in time, this make us eligible for any particular transportation funds above and beyond what we get now?
Very well, a very good possibility. Now, one of the other things that we're doing is talking about Mr. Voels.
I got it.
We also adopted a, didn't we adopt a bicycle plan that we're discussing a moving, amending?
We did, and it's a part of your Master Street Plan.
Right. So, that was the first opening of the door that made us eligible for federal funding. I know that I've seen some emails recently that were talking about, I don't know if it's major revisions, but certainly some revisions of that Master Street Plan as it relates to bicycles.
Well, we do have the opportunity with the Arkansas Recreational Trails Funds are available. We'll be applying this September, and we'll be asking you to support a proposal. The Bike Committee comes up with different ideas of trails at most of its meetings, so we can certainly, that's a local ordinance, and we'll change it as they see fit.
But, Mayor, are we on the last year of the T-21 funds authorization, or? No, don't know.
Well, I know that our River Trail was done about 80 to 90% done by, you know, by federal funds, most of which were, you know, T-21, ICE-T, you know, T-LU, SafetyLU, I mean, those various highway authorization bills. So, you know, the biggest, the bulk of that trail was done by a federal fund. Mr. Voels and I kept asking for grants one after the other.
Right. That was 80% funds on all those projects.
And so, we want to keep, we want to keep that partnership as best we can. Alderman Height?
Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 city departments represented on this task force, and that either the director or the head of each of those departments or a representative of those departments need to be notified of the meeting that we're going to be having Friday at 12:00 noon. Right, 12:00 noon, and we'll consider this notification to the press, too, you know, that 12:00 noon at my office or that conference room, we're going to have the first meeting of this bicycle-friendly community task force. And you're welcome to come. Any further discussion
on this? The next item?
Mr. Carter?
Mayor, I have one question. What was CARP again? I was missing one word in my notes.
Central Arkansas Recreational Peddlers.
Recreational. That's, thank you, Alderman.
Sounds fishy to me.
Oh, Alderman Witcher, you want to say that louder so everybody can enjoy?
It wasn't worthy.
Sounds fishy to you?
Yes.
Ordinances?
Ordinance 0761, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for upgrading the 911 system for the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Maybe suspend the rules and place it on its second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. Call out for a vote. Mr. Azell, tell me why we're waiving bids and what this will do for us.
Yes, sir. If the council remember, back in the spring, we passed some resolutions supporting a bill through the state legislature to raise 911 fees from 40 cents to 50 cents. The extra 10 cents was to help upgrade 911 systems in the state, and that has passed, and those companies are starting to pay. This money goes into the Arkansas CMRS Board, and then we go to that board and ask for approval to upgrade our systems. We went in June and asked for an upgrade to our system, because our system is 12 years old. It's, in terms of techno, technology, it is antiquated, and we can't add to it. We can't do anything for the new technology that's out there. So, this allows us to upgrade. The board will reimburse us up to the amount of percentage of wireless calls that we take. We take 71.46% wireless 911 calls in our center, so they will reimburse us about 2/3 of the cost of this, and the city will only be out the 1/3 cost.
Give us a little idea of what this will do for us.
This new system is IP-based, and a lot of the 911 technology is going into the IP-based internet. It's so, it's moving so fast, we don't know exactly what's coming. It also has the hearing impaired feature that allows us to text message with the hearing impaired without having to add any additional equipment. It gives us quick playback. One of the things that I really like about the system is it's got something called Automatic Rebid, which means that it keeps plotting a wireless call to give us a better location. That's a problem we have sometimes with wireless calls. It's not exact like hardwire, and we have trouble getting a location of a caller. This keeps plotting until we get a better location for wireless calls, particularly those calls that are dropped and we have to call them back, and we can't make contact. At least, we have an address where we might respond and find out if there's an emergency.
And why do you, in terms of 71% of our calls being wireless, give us a relationship to other communities with that number, that percentage?
Some, a lot of communities are lower than that, but the city of Conway, for example, is 80%. They have three colleges, campuses there, and probably every student on campus has a cell phone. But we have three or four interstate systems that travel, go through our city, and we also have a college, Pulaski Tech. But the interstate system probably causes a great deal of our calls, because one accident can generate 50 to 75 calls on the interstate.
What I was trying to sort of get Mr. Azell to say is that 71% of our calls is a fairly high number in relation to most communities.
Absolutely. A lot of rural communities are under 50% with wireless.
So, that gives us this opportunity to go to this fund and roughly get that 71% of this total cost back. So, that's why it was pointed out, and it would be very beneficial to our day-in and day-out customers, and we think, you know, those that are traveling through on the interstate are helping get our percentage up, because that's the limit that we can apply for.
And one other thing is that we pay maintenance fees on these, about $800 a month. Once we get into this system, we can go to the board and ask for a reimbursement on our first year's maintenance, and they'll reimburse us at the 71% cost on maintenance.
Second, Alderman Bryant?
Two things. One, I know I called 911 on Interstate 30 and ended up at White River Sheriff's Office, White County Sheriff's Office or someplace, and had to have, they wouldn't even transfer me over to the Highway Department when there was a wreck there. So, you know, there is a need for this, and I appreciate that we're doing it. Second, I believe we've got an amendment that Mr. Carter has that we'll need to discuss when Mr. Height finishes.
I was just going to question, of the 71% of our calls that are wireless, how many of those people, how many of those calls actually do not know where they're located?
Doesn't matter.
A good number of those people traveling down an interstate who are not from our area would not know where they are, and we try to pinpoint them to a mile marker, to some building or something, and they're not aware of the community or...
So, a large majority of our wireless calls come from interstate-based, from interstate highways?
There's a large number of, not all, but there are a large number that come from interstate because of our accidents on the interstate, or any event on the interstate, like a hazmat.
Any other questions? What's our amendment?
Mayor, in the appropriation, we just needed to include that taxes, the tax on the price is appropriated also. That wasn't included in the original, and it's, I believe there's an amended version that you should have. If not, then I'll be happy to read it in.
Just go ahead and read it, so the community, those that may be listening are aware of it.
In Section Two, it's to insert the words "plus applicable taxes" after the cost of $169,950. And it's also to strike as follows in the second line of Section Two, $48,5373 to be the responsibility of the city, and it's to strike that phrase, and then to insert the words "and the balance to be paid by the city" at the end of the third line after CMRS Board.
Do I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, and on that amendment, Ms. Whitby, you have it.
Yes, sir. Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I know this is not germane to this particular item, but have we, in a number of years ago, we did a facility study, and my recollection is, one of the things that came out of that facility study was to look at moving the 911 center away from the area it's in now because of the high, well, because of potential of a disaster in the yards. You think maybe we might kind of roll that around again?
Oh, Mr. Azell and I, he rolled that around with me when we talked about this about a week ago, and, you know, I sort of rolled it around with him, and, you know, we recognize that there is a significant cost associated with that, and we'll be happy to continue rolling that around, Alderman, until we can figure out how to come up with that cost. So, your, your question, I was almost going to ask you if you'd been talking to Mr. Azell, you know, after, after he and I visited, because that was brought up in our discussion.
Was it?
You're absolutely correct. Although, I will have to say that, you know, that, you know, I mean, we have had a few evacuations. I know there was one before I came here. I think there was some spill in part of Dixie. Alderman Thomas had to be evacuated. You know, that risk is obviously there, and I don't disagree that that's a risk that would be nice to address, but I almost believe that, you know, that the major reason we ought to take a look at relocating our facility is, and the risk is one thing that would be addressed, but at the same sense, at the same time, you know, that facility used to be the public works area, and it sort of was adopted by 911. And so, I think as much of a reason, you know, to expand and to modernize that facility in a different, you know, building would be almost as much of a reason as the concern that I would have for some kind of a, some kind of an accident occurring in the rail yard. So, you know, that's possible all up and down the rail system, and while if we moved, we certainly wouldn't move close to that, you know, with our interstate system or with hazardous material in our trucks. Almost virtually anywhere, you know, you could have some exposure to, you know, to some kind of a spill with the mobility of our hazardous material.
Historic note, Mayor. Actually, I think the 911 center is operating in what used to be the city garage.
Yeah. I went to work in that building when I was a junior in high school, when I had my first job with the city, so I know exactly what was there. And so, we thank Mr. Azell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we, Ms. Whitby? On motion to adopt is amended?
We need a motion to adopt.
All right. How about that?
Motion's made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to adopt is amended, Ms. Whitby?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0762, Mayor Hayes?
Please, please call it.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for extraction, extraction equipment with adapter tools for the North Little Rock Fire Department.
Let me, let me go ahead and get a motion. Let's take it a third, and let me explain it, if I can. We've read, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for extrication, that's what I thought, extrication equipment with adapter tools for the North Little Rock Fire Department, second reading.
Let's go ahead and take it a third, if we can. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. So moved.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for extrication equipment with adapter tools for the North Little Rock Fire Department, third and final reading.
Chief, just come up here and, you know, confirm what I say or add to it, and answer any questions if necessary. This equipment, how many units is this?
This is two complete units.
Two complete units. The city of Little Rock actually took bids on this, and this was the low bidder. We are asking the council to consider waiving bids, you know, not only because it was partly bid, and at least in relation to us, but at the same time, we interchange, we train a lot together. We're also out at their training facility, and so we feel, at least on behalf of the chief, that it's very important that we have similar
When I called Little Rock to see what they were using before we went out for bids, so we could get interchangeable with them, they said they had just bid this equipment, and they opened bids on April the ninth. I looked at the specifications, very similar, the same specifications we would have put out, so I just asked the council to look at their bids instead of us going through the, uh, formal process of bidding.
And I would also point out, this is eight-thirty-three money that I believe is money we receive through insurance or homeowner premiums, uh, and so, it can only be used for fire, uh, our fire department and related purposes.
That's correct, sir.
Do I get a motion to, any other, any questions?
Uh, we need to amend this and to add plus applicable tax. Two, this needs to be added.
Section Two.
We do.
Our city attorney's just doing okay.
He's on the ball.
The second time around.
Oh, and in, under Section Two.
Uh, I hear a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Did you get that, Ms. Whitby?
Uh, right here.
Right there, okay. On the motion to amend?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinance O-763, Alderman Thomas?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing an off-premise sign for certain real property located southwest of the intersection of Highway One-Sixty-Five and Campbell Road in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
I'd like to move this rule be placed on the, that may be amended and placed on the second reading. I'd like to split, uh, explain it here a moment.
Second?
Second.
On the motion to spend?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
No.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, we have a, a new subdivision out here, and it's, uh, because of the flood wall and railroad tracks, it's a little bit difficult to see, and I think it would be very beneficial if we could get the sign there directing people to this particular area. We have the applicant here tonight, but I'd like to move that the rules be suspended and placed on a second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Yes.
Um, actually, it's ready to be read, so it's, it's ready to be read for the second reading.
Hey, let's read it.
This is an ordinance allowing an off-premise sign for certain real property located southwest of the intersection of Highway One-Sixty-Five and Campbell Road in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
And I'll take Alderman Thomas's move to suspend the rules and place it on third reading.
Yes.
And there's a second to that. On, on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance allowing an off-premise sign for certain real property located southwest of the intersection of Highway One-Sixty-Five and Campbell Road in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Uh, Alderman, uh, Thomas, do you have any other comments?
We have the applicant here if anyone would like to ask questions, but I'd like to move the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, there's a second to that, uh, soon?
Second.
Yes.
Second.
All right, now, discussion, Alderman Height?
Uh, doesn't our sign, uh, code, sign ordinances prohibit off-premise signs?
Mr. Carter?
I have to defer to Mr. Voels on that at the moment.
Yes, you've amended the sign code to allow only off-premise new billboards on freeways, certain freeways, uh, with the removal of certain...
Was this, uh, was this matter brought before the, uh, variant, uh, the, the sign board?
No, the sign board grants variances on, on private property. It doesn't grant a special use like this would be off-premise sign, uh, attachment, and, um, so the aldermen submitted it to the council for consideration.
Okay, so our, so our code then strictly prohibits this?
Your current code, uh, restricts it to the billboard banking, uh, is our out, out off-premise sign, uh, provision in our sign code.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the applicant explain, uh, why he needs that, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Uh, my name's Joseph Story. I'm general partner with Triple J Builders, and we're the developers of Valley Subdivision at One-Sixty-Five and Campbell Road. Uh, we're having a hard time marketing these houses, uh, according to our, uh, marketing consultant, and it's primarily due to the levy that runs down, uh, One-Sixty-Five that prohibits, prohibits visibility. Uh, and they have asked us to, uh, install a sign. We talked to the city, uh, planning zoning, and, uh, they told us what the formality of that was because it would be going on other people's property. And we have submitted a, uh, signed, uh, approval from the, uh, property owner for that sign.
Is this a temporary sign?
Yes, sir.
What is the definition of temporary for how?
One year, sir.
One year.
Any other questions? Alderman Whicher?
Okay, you know, could, could we put a one-year limitation in sec, in one of the sections?
Yes.
Section Two, E.
I'll make that motion. Motion, uh, Mr. City Attorney, how about telling us where you want to put that twelve-month limitation?
The sign will be removed within twelve months of passage of this ordinance.
Where is that going to be?
Section Two. In Section Two, subsection E.
Okay. I heard Alderman Height make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Bryant?
Um, I'm just curious, you know, what, I mean, I've seen signs for subdivisions before that have been up for a year, and in three or four months, they are in, you know, pretty dismal shape. Uh, you know, I mean, is, is, I guess we can't legislate the maintenance of the sign, but...
I don't know why we couldn't. I mean, I assume that, that, you know, I mean, it, obviously, self-interest is...
What they're charging for this sign, I think it will be quality signs, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Ross?
I mean, is there some reason for not taking this to the sign board? I mean, was it, huh? Oh, has it been to the sign board already?
I don't, I'm not aware.
Uh, it is, it was explained to me, ma'am, that it's because this is not going on my property, this is going on other people's property.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, one, one other question.
You know, Mr. Story?
Yes, sir.
One other question. How high will this sign be?
Approximately three feet.
Okay, so it'll be three feet plus the four?
Yes, sir.
Of the signboard, okay.
Yes, sir. It's going into a farm field.
This wouldn't be with the planning commission either. Other questions?
Where is Campbell, Campbell Road on Balkam Pike? Where is that intersection approximately? Is it?
Mount half, uh, east of where Broadway turns north, sir.